Yes, and we're there, and then I'm gonna take this.
Okay.
We don't have Kyla up there right now.
Where'd she go? There she is.
I don't see her photo or image.
She's frozen.
She had that problem yesterday.
Need you to all mute yourselves, please. Bart, you'll have to be ready.
I'm ready.
I am. Yep. I'm live on YouTube. Good evening. On behalf of the Park Hill Board of Education, thank you for attending tonight's Zoom Video Conference Board Meeting streamed on YouTube Live. Those present at tonight's meeting include board members, administration and staff. Board members present are Bart Klein, President, Kimberly Reed, Vice President, Janice Bowlen-Treasure, Todd Fain, Scott Monces, Susan Newberger, and Kyla Yamada. Administration and staff present include Jeanette Coward, Superintendent, Paul Kelly, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Technology, Bill Redinger, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Mike Kimbrel, Executive Director for Quality and Evaluation, Clay Fulgham, General Counsel, Nicole Kirby, Director of Communication Services, and myself, Opal Hibbs, Board Secretary. At this time, I will ask Mr. Klein, Board President, to please call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Ms. Hibbs. Good evening. I call the March 26, 2020 Meeting of the Park Hill Board of Education Order. We'll start with board announcements. Mr. Fain?
None, thank you.
Mr. Monces?
Yes, I want to thank all of our Park Hill community and especially our teachers and staff and all of our kids for the work they're doing this week. Thank you.
Ms. Reed?
None, thank you.
Ms. Bowlin?
None, thank you.
Ms. Yamada?
None, thank you.
Ms. Newberger?
None, thank you.
Dr. Coward?
Yeah, just a couple. I'm kind of echoing what Mr. Monces talked about, but I do want to thank the Board of Education for holding this meeting electronically to assist in keeping everyone safe and modeling good habits and practices here. But I also want to thank our entire Park Hill family and our staff for the great work they've done this week, whether it's feeding our kids, providing amazing distant learning experiences. The technology support has been, has been just unbelievable. Nicole Kirby and her team with their communication has been spot on and constantly updating, and we really appreciate that. And a group, I don't, we don't think too much, but I want to thank also our district leadership team, which includes all of our administrative team and all the people you're seeing on, on the screen right now for the work that they did the two weeks leading up to this beginning of our distance learning, but also the work we're doing right now and moving forward. And I think that's, it's just, I cannot say enough good things, and I'm so appreciative. They have such a wonderful team. I also want to thank the Park Hill community and our voters. Frankly, our taxpayers, without the, the support that you have given us, we could not offer our students the type of learning opportunities they're getting right now. And so thank you to our entire community. I think it bodes well for all of us, and I am just so proud of us as we're doing all those things. And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Coward. We'll move on to adoption of the agenda. Dr. Coward, are there any modifications for this evening?
Not this evening, thank you.
Board, do you have any modifications you'd like to request? Hearing none, I will need a motion and a second to adopt the March 26, 2020 Agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Reed and a second by Mr. Fain to adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Say nay. Motion carries seven oh. Move on to the consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda includes items three one through three, three nineteen. Dr. Coward, are there any items in need to be highlighted?
No, I would ask, Ms. Hibbs, could you check? The view that I am seeing does not show the entire agenda. It looks like it's at 140%. And so maybe we could reduce that at the top so that everyone can see the agenda might be better. That looks a little better. Thank you. Then we can scroll down. Thank you. And as this is a kind of our maiden voyage on this too, we'll just slow down a little bit to make sure we get everybody and have time to get in there. So we can scroll to, I don't have any changes on the consent agenda. I do want to recognize our amazing music teacher at Renner who is retiring this year, and we just appreciate everything that she's done for us. So otherwise, we are good to go on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coward. Board, do you have any questions for Dr. Coward? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda. I will need a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items three one through three nineteen as presented.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Ms. Reed and a second by Ms. Newberger to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven oh. Our first action item is approval of bids for Lead Innovation Studio Package Six. This is a second read. I'll turn it over to Dr. Coward.
At this time, we have no changes on that. This is very timely for us, though, to help us get all of our IT and AV and from all of our packages in so we can continue that construction on that project.
Board, any questions? Hearing none, I will need a motion and a second to approve a bids for Lead Innovation Studio Package Six as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Fain, a second by Ms. Reed to approve bids for Lead Innovation Studio as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven oh. Our next item is approval of contracts for probationary teachers gaining tenure for 2020, 2021. Dr. Redinger?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. As, as we do each year in March, the next four items are the approval of contracts for employees to serve in the 2020, 21 school year. And as President Klein mentioned, this first list is of teachers who will gain tenure with the beginning of their next contract. They have completed five probationary contracts successfully with Park Hill, and we would ask the board's approval of this group.
Okay. Board, do you have any questions? Hearing none, I will need a motion and a second to offer permanent contracts to the list of probationary teachers as presented for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Reed and a second by Ms. Bowlin to offer permanent contracts to the list of probationary teachers as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven oh. Our next item is approval of probationary teacher contracts for 2020, 2021. Dr. Redinger?
Yes, so this is the group of teachers who are within that first five years, those who we are recommending for probationary contracts to continue with Park Hill for next school year.
Board, any questions? Hearing none, I will need a motion and a second to offer contracts to the list of probationary teachers as presented for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Reed and a second by Ms. Newberger to offer contracts to the list of probationary teachers as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven oh. Our next item is approval of contracts for district support staff for 2020, 2021. Dr. Redinger?
Yeah, this is the, the group of support staff who do work on a contract basis for us, so social workers and various therapists. And we would ask your approval of their work for the 2020 and 21 school year.
Thank you, sir. Board, any questions? Hearing none, I will need a motion and a second to offer contracts to the list of district support staff as presented for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Fain, a second by Ms. Newberger to offer contracts to the list of district support staff as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven oh. Next item is approval of contracts for nurses for the 2020, 21, 2020, 21 school year. Sorry, Dr. Redinger.
Yeah, nothing to add to that group. Nurses who serve on contract who are, as you can imagine, doing yeoman's work right now in the work that we're doing. So we'd ask your approval of this group.
All right. Board, any questions? I will need a motion and a second to offer contracts to the list of nurses as presented for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Reed and a second by Ms. Bowlin to offer contracts to the list of nurses as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven oh. Our next item is recommendation superintendent regarding pay for Park Hill employees during the COVID-19 school closure. Dr. Coward?
Yes, bringing this to the board tonight, as you know, previously, at a previous meeting, we approved, or you gave me provided authorization to pay all of our staff members and essential and also essential service providers through April the third. And so that is coming to an end next week. And so with the closure and the stay home that we are under, the order we're under right now, I would really like to extend that out to April the 25th. And it would be for all of our employees and our essential service providers at that time. And, and actually, as I look back, I'm very thankful that our school board meetings ended up in the order they're going to end up, that we want me to get on April 16th. There's so much happening at the federal level right now and in our local level of identifying the impacts of this and what it looks like for us as we move forward. But we appreciate that opportunity to take care of our personnel. We'd like to do that at this time if we can. I'd also reach out to Dr. Kelly if he has any comments or any questions you have, just so he can unmute. Board, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you at this time.
Dr. Coward? What do we expect for our fund balance, operating fund balance? What do we expect to happen to that if we approve this?
Dr. Kelly, do you want to do it and take that one, or do you want me to take it either one?
Yeah, I'll start and then anything I miss. Yeah, so this would be a drop of about a million dollars, a little over a million dollars through April 24th, and that would have a impact on that fund balance percentage of about three quarters of a percent, so about point seven five. So I do expect our ending fund balance for this fiscal year to be between 21 and 22%.
And does this, what we're approving tonight, does that give us the flexibility? If the, if the federal government comes in and offers some type of incentives to our employees, can we transfer our obligation to the federal program? Whatever that might be.
We've actually talked about that a little bit. We talked about it yesterday with Dr. Redinger and Dr. Kaiser and legal counsel along with Dr. Kelly about that. I think the challenge we have right now on the federal is they still haven't approved it yet, and then trying to get that all figured out. I think that may be something, I appreciate the question, Mr. Monces, because I think that's something that as we move to the future, especially after April 24th, I think we'll be looking at that as options and what do we need to do at that time. Right now, we just don't have enough guidance right now to do anything like that. But if there's some type of an amendment or language we'd like to add to give us that flexibility, or at least to provide that to me during this time, I am fine with that, too. I'll leave that to the pleasure of the board.
Well, I definitely want, if, if the federal government steps in, I definitely want them to take over the obligation instead of the school district. I mean, I think that makes general sense. Is there, I didn't quite understand, do I need to make a motion for an amendment or?
No, I think right now, we can just have some discussion. I think what I'm hearing right now from the federal is they are looking at large packages that would come back to the state. And since the biggest impact for us would actually be our state funding part as far as keeping us whole, is kind of the area we're looking at. What I'm hearing you say is that if they're going to pick up unemployment, which I think we've all seen the unemployment numbers today just go through the roof. And so I'm not sure I know what that capacity is. The other piece behind that, as we have these conversations and think about it, is if we shift that to another location or to another, for example, to the federal government, I'm not sure the impact it has on their benefits at this time. I also am not sure what the impact it has on their retirement or our classified staff members. And I want to make sure we keep them whole in their retirement also. And so I appreciate the conversation around flexibility. I think that's a wonderful conversation for us to have. I just wonder if it might be, I wonder if it might be just, we might need that on the next, if we, if we have to go past April 24th, when we have a little more information about what those programs are, and there's a little more guidance. Mr. Fulgham, is there any guidance that you could provide us on this also as we've looked at those documents?
Sure. So, so far, what we've seen from the federal level in terms of any paid, they'd call it paid leave, that so far that, that obligation would remain with us. I mean, there, it would be a requirement that we continue to pay. Some sectors are getting offsetting tax credits, help fund that. So far, public employers have, have not received that corresponding offset on a tax credit. I know there's a lot of lobbying activity going on. And even with this latest rat bill that's maybe about to get passed to include public employers to have that tax credit offset. But I haven't heard a final word yet on whether that's going to happen. So I think even if there's a requirement under federal law for us to continue to pay, that as of now, we would be the one with that obligation, and then we hope that we'd have some help on the backend.
I just want to express that it's my intent to make our, our folks whole in their, in their, in their salary and as if they were normally working. But to, if we could shift the burden, that we do shift the burden, as long as everything, I mean, there's a lot of details that I don't want to get into from a board level to discuss. I just want to give the flexibility to the administration to make those decisions as, as it evolves. So I am fine with, with what we're voting on here.
Much appreciated.
I had a question about if there was any difference between our certified and our classified, because essentially one is a, is a salaried employee and the other one is an hourly employee. Is there any difference in either how any federal program might look at it or in how we, we're looking at it in our budget?
At this time, Mrs. Newberger, we're looking at them as the same. They are Park Hill employees, and we're viewing them the same as they go forward. We're obligated to pay the contracts of our certified because they are signed contracts. The people that are most at risk right here are classified staff. And so that's why I would like to continue to pay them, to keep them whole. There's just so much that's out there, and I'm just concerned as we're seeing increasing reports of COVID-19 in our, in the Platte County area. I don't believe that's going to slow down for a while. And so I just want to make sure that we are taking care of, of all of our people right now. They do great work for us. And I think this is an opportunity for us to, to demonstrate how much we, we do value them, and we want them back. We don't want them, they've got their jobs and we care very greatly for them. But also in this time, we want to take care of them, too.
I think as long as we are maintaining the distance learning program, we have not received any indication that the federal government would not reimburse us for all of these services, all the way from Title I and early childhood special ed and IDEA. So we, that's the news that we know today, that the way that we're approaching it is going to be reimbursable as it would have been. Now, we just have to keep on top of it, just to make sure that, that doesn't, they don't pull the rug out from under us. But those costs then would shift to the district. I'm imagining that would leave at least some of the allocation in what would be carryover, so we wouldn't lose the funds, but could just spend them in another year. It wouldn't be a loss of revenue. It just perhaps they wouldn't fund the distance learning activities that we have.
Board, any other questions? Quick question. You may have cut out, and so I didn't get the full information verbally here, but I wanted to make sure that you're seeking approval through April 24th. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And this does also include the bus drivers in addition to?
It does at this time. We have worked so hard to work on our transportation. We want to make sure we're maintaining that. Plus, we may need them to come back and drive for us on April 27th, and we just don't know that information right now.
Great. And then the total commitment cost wise, I, I think you had shared that number.
It's around, it's right, it's right at a million, it's right at a million dollars.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for asking.
Any other questions, Board? Hearing none, I will need a motion and a second to authorize the superintendent to pay all employees.
I'm sorry, I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Newberger?
Um, I, I just want to make sure that we've had a conversation with First Student that they are, are, they, I know this is part of their contract, but that they know that this is to pay the bus drivers.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, and I'm not, not casting aspersion on, on First Student, but I do know in some cases where money has been given and the management keeps it because the, the regular online employees are not working, in their mind, not working.
Jim Rich, our Director of Operations, has been in contact with them, and also Dr. Kelly has been in contact with them, and I think we're on a very clear understanding of what we're paying for here. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If this is approved tonight, there will be a, an addendum actually to the contract from, that we're still in. It's, it's from 2015. But it would be an addendum that would outline that.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Klein. I just need some clarification on that.
Not to worry. Any other questions, Board?
Mr. Klein, could you read the motion again, please?
I will. I will need a motion and second to authorize the superintendent to pay all employees and essential service providers through April 24th, 2020 during the COVID-19 school closure.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Monces and a second by Mr. Fain to authorize the superintendent to pay all employees and essential service providers through April 24th, 2020 during the COVID-19 school closure. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven oh. Our next item is a board discussion of COVID-19 pandemic matters. Dr. Coward, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, and before we move on, Board, I just want to thank you for that authorization. It really means a lot to our employees and our community. So just thank you for that, and keeps our economy here moving, too. So that's a big deal. On the COVID matters, the one of the things I did want to just let you note about tonight is that as we're trying to be more efficient with our food service that we're providing, and by the way, we provided over 1,100 meals again today. So that number continues to be high and will continue, I believe, to increase. Big shout out to Rhonda McCulloch and the entire Food Service and Nutrition Services team for the great work they're doing. It's really doing a great job. But to be more efficient, we are actually going to close the Plaza location after Monday, the 30th, and consolidate that back over to, they can, they'll have the choice of where they're going to go to. Congress may be the closest. It could be one of our other schools that's close, Lakeview may be closer. We're communicating with those families as they're coming through the line, so they're very aware of that every day, and we'll provide support and, and, and help them do that as they go forward. The other thing that we have done, just as from a distance learning, again, huge thank you to Derek Unruh, our Director of Technology, and his team. We were able to push out video conferencing. I think you probably saw a lot of that on Twitter and Facebook today to our K5 group, so that they can do some actual teaching. But the other piece behind it is making those connections with our students. We don't want our students to feel isolated, and we just want to have that from kindergarten all the way up. And so Zoom is our new best friend, I guess is how I would say that, as we're doing that. And the academic services team is working hard just to talk, just to work about what we're going to be doing. I know we had the first 10 days planned, and so I'm going to ask Dr. Kimbrel just to jump on here real quick and just give a quick update of what's happening in the academic services area as we move forward. Mike?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so yeah, we've had a great first week, just like Dr. Coward said. I've heard numerous stories that are tremendous in terms of how teachers, staff, principals, our coaches, our learning facilitators, you name it, they're part of the team. They've been helping out in a way that has really been an awesome thing to say. So we're four days in, and we've got a little ways to go. But as Dr. Coward said, as you guys know, we have computers in every student's hands, grades three through 12. We have K2 in which they were allowed to get materials, and those lessons were accessible on the web or emailed, or they could also pick up paper packets at the school. We had about 150 or so throughout the district picked up. So most people are accessing that content via online, which is good to know. So that means that we're, we're learning what the capacity of our district is in terms of their connectivity and able to access that material. One of the things, I want to reiterate what Dr. Coward said, and I heard this today from Dr. Bridwell, is that they're currently working on a list of making sure that every student has a contact, so that, that there is a contact made with every student, and especially those that we're not seeing log in or things like that. So there's a plan on that, that we have made sure that every single student is getting a contact, which we think is really important. I talked about that last week, that we know that them hearing our voice, them seeing our face on video, whatever that may be, is going to be important for this, this time. We are in the process of developing three more weeks of lessons for that K through five, and we're going to have those ready by Tuesday. And then from there, principals are going to help us with whether those need to be distributed via paper or also they'll be pushed out via the web and also email. And so we will have a full distance learning plan built through April 24th by Tuesday. And I'm confident in the instructional coaches. As an anecdotal piece, we've had other districts as far away as California contact us and ask us if we, if they can use our stuff during this time because of the access that we provided and what they see as quality materials. And so that's been really a compliment to our learning facilitators, especially our instructional coaches and that team that's put all that together. So that's where we're at right now, distance learning wise. I think parents are ready to get to the end of the first week, have a little breath, and then, and then get to the, the next, the next week. But the, the staff has risen to the occasion, and it has been really, really, really awesome to watch.
Thank you, Mike. Go ahead, Mr. Klein.
Regarding the contact reached student, is that a, a one way, if the student needs to contact somebody, they've got someone to talk to, or will you proactively, if you see something going on or a lack of something going on, reach out to that student?
It's proactive, so especially with those young ones. And, and secondary wise, the I was telling, or talking to Dr. Bridwell, so we're talking to elementary, but she was saying that they are developing a strategic list of, and this was yesterday, so within two to two and a half days of distance learning, they were identifying students that they either knew needed a contact, or they hadn't seen activity in some other way. And I think that's something that they're doing proactively, but they're also very available via email, phone, whatever that may be, through that office hours configuration that we set up. So I know that that's happening as well. But what I'm talking about is we want to make sure proactively that we're, we're reaching out and kids aren't going five weeks without hearing from us, or however long we're going to be out.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Also on the, for the social workers, Dr. Mai has been working with our counselors and our social workers, providing a lot of support for our families. There's a lot of good things that are happening. Some of our partners in the communities, such as Speed Northland Kids, Harvest Stores, Harvesters, Level Up Kids, all of them have reached out and are working with us. And so we think that's fantastic from a community piece. Also from a community piece, Tammy Saylor, our lead nurse, has been working with Platte County Health, and we've already inventoried our materials that we have here, so in case they're needed by one of our local hospitals or someplace, those are just constant conversations that are happening within our community. And, and I think those are our strengths as we go forward. Dr. Redinger, would you mind just coming on for a second, just talking about what we're, how we're going to handle during this time? We still need to hire people. We're still doing business. So would you talk about that briefly?
Yeah. My staff this week has done a great job to convert our interview.
Yeah, my staff this week has done a great job to convert our interview and recruit processes to essentially to what you're seeing right now. You know, we're, we're still doing screening interviews for incoming teacher candidates. We, we are finishing out a couple of administrator hire processes. And, and so we've been able to make that, that transition, scheduling people to come on to Zoom meetings and then off of them at just the right times, as though we would have that candidate moving from place to place in our schools. So we're really in good shape where that's concerned. It felt like we were a little bit ahead maybe on interviewing and that, that probably benefited because we were able to take a week or so to, to get ourselves organized. But we're in good shape to have that continuing. And I know that at the April 16th board meeting, you'll, you'll see several recommend hires. We'll be ready to go with those.
Thank you, Bill. I think we're also able to provide virtual tours of our buildings. And so they can see those. And so we're working on that to make sure our candidates understand where they're going and what's happening and make those connections too as we're doing that. Other areas just of interest on AP testing, that's always a question that comes up. AP has done a really good job. They've been very proactive and they've set a date in May that they'll be doing testing. It'll look a little different this year. It'll be online and the students will do that at their homes, but they're putting that in place. So that's another great reason. Our dual credit classes are still continuing on. So our students are getting that dual credit at the secondary level as we're having those experiences there for them too. If you want to follow somebody fun, follow our middle schools. They're doing some really cool stuff out there as they work with our communities also. The one topic that probably will come up at some time is summer school. What's going to look, what is summer school look like? And right now, on my meeting yesterday with Desi, they don't know. They're, they just don't know where they're going to be from a funding standpoint of what they'll be able to support and not support. And I don't believe we'll hear anything about that probably till the end of April. And so we really hope that we can do that. We think summer school is going to be important for our students. I think it's just going to be based so much on the health and how that process is, what, what do we look like as we flatten the curve? We may be flattening the curve, but we may be going longer with some of these issues. And so I just don't know what that will look like in the future. And we also want to get out the information at some point in time. We're working on it. I know prom is a concern and so we're looking at that. It's a concern, but that one's going to be a tough one. Graduation is one we really want to focus on. We, we just know that's such an important time for our seniors and we really want to try to figure out something for them. So we're working on those two things too and hope to communicate within the next week very quickly about, especially on some of these topics, what's happening. Again, thanks to Nicole and her team. They're really doing a great job of just constantly updating everything that we've got going. And I think that's really working well for our families. What questions do you guys have as board members? What are things that you'd like some clarification on?
Dr. Coward, you're in constant contact with the area superintendents as well. So whatever, whatever we decide about prom and graduation, those are things that everyone is facing. It, it would be easier if we could all agree on something rather than, you know, be the outlier.
Sure, sure. Well, it's kind of like, we call it like, it's like a snow day, you know? It's kind of like one of those and, and we may not agree. I think every community is going to look at that a little differently and try to meet the needs of their students. I think we have to also be realistic. As we come out, after April the 24th, I don't see the, the order just saying, and now everybody can get together in large groups. I just don't think that, I don't think people are going to be comfortable doing that yet. I think we're all going to be a little bit on the shy side on that. It may be extended, it may be small groups. And so a lot of those are going to drive some of those decisions for us too as we move to the future. I don't see us just saying, and we're done. It may happen that way and that would be wonderful if it would, but we'll see. And we also haven't, we really don't know what it looks like for after April 24th at this time either. So that's the challenges we have.
Well, and our, our other challenge that may be different than other school districts is that our graduations are not held at our sites. So some of that may be taken out of our hands with whatever community of Christ decides or the city of Kansas City.
Sure, we're going to look at all options. We want to take care of them if we can. We surely, we surely want to do that.
We could always use the football field for the graduation.
Those are, that's something we're looking at. It's just what does it need to look like? And what is our, what are the requirements we'll have from the health department and from our governmental officials at that time? And we'll just figure that one out, yeah.
So, Dr. Coward, my, one of my biggest concerns is making sure, obviously the crisis, we got, we have to get through this.
Right.
But to make sure next fall that our kids are ready to start in their next grade. And so I know that's a big question. I just want to put it out there. I'm sure it's on the tops of your minds already.
We have a lot of thing on the top of our mind right now, but yeah. It's a big deal because this is a big gap. It's a big gap for kids and that's why I think it's so, I think that's why it's so impressive what our teachers are doing right now to fill that gap. And in one of our state conversations, again, I want to thank our taxpayers for their support they've given us because we're able to do things in our community that they can't do, where they don't have access. For those students, they're not, they're losing, you know? They're maybe getting some packets at best, but that one-on-one that our teachers are providing is really extraordinary. And that's, we're very blessed to have that, I want to say that, yes.
One of the other concerns I have is the, the mental health, not only of our, our employees and us continuing to, to pay them, it will help tremendously with their mental health in that respect, but also the mental health for our students. I know that our students, I don't know how our parents have communicated the crisis to them, but I, I do hope that that is something that each of our teachers is making part of their lesson. I, I don't know how you make people feel safe in this. Sometimes I feel safer than others. But, you know, I, I do think that since that's one of our big concerns and our, our big initiatives in the district, I think that now is when we need it more than ever.
Nicole, would you mind just briefly, just, it's a good opportunity since we're live on YouTube, just to say, I know in your communications, you have some identified locations around mental health because it is a concern for us too, Mrs. Newberger. Nicole?
Yes, we are working with Dr. Amaya. She's preparing a webinar and we're going to be helping to promote that to provide some supports to families. She also shared with us today that tri-county mental health is going to be still providing therapy to the students that they were already supporting. So they are doing that via distance and they're working with the families to make sure that those students are still getting what they need. Is that what you had in mind?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And, and just anecdotally, as, as the former teacher, I've seen quite a few stories on, on Facebook and Instagram about parents saying they didn't think teaching was going to be that hard and that they were really going to appreciate the teachers when the kids went back to school. So I know, I know personally how hard the job is, but I, I think this is an opportunity for some people who are being really tested in this case. And that includes our teachers and our first responders and our nurses and our doctors, that they're our heroes in this.
Anyone else have any questions or any updates? I can share that my niece, they're doing some homeschooling from their state that they're in also. And unfortunately, one of their students was sent out of the class for insubordination and bad language and another used their scissors to cut their scissors, their sister's hair during that time. So I'm sure our parents are facing some of those things too. So we need to thank our, we need to thank our parents a lot too. They're trying to work from home and, and help support our education. And so they, they deserve a big, big, big thank you from us as a district too, as we go through this. So thank you so much for that. We'll continue to update and provide that information to you as it comes available. And just thank you for your support during this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Coward. And we really appreciate everything you and your team are doing as well. Excellent job. Our next item is information written reports. Tonight we have first reads. Items 6-1 through 6-2 are bids, contracts, and agreements. Item 6-3 through 6-4 are curriculum. Board, do you have any comments or questions for Dr. Coward? Hearing none, we'll move on to Board of Education policies and regulations. We have first read policies and regulations tonight. Items 7-1 through 7-15 are policies. Items 7-16 through 7-23 are regulations, which are for information only. Mr. Fulham, are you there? Any questions you'd like to expand upon?
Sure, these are, you can see, these are mostly J policies related to student services. There's a few kind of straggling G policies. But the most significant one I wanted to highlight is there's several items that relate to residency and student admissions. Dr. Colvin and I worked pretty extensively to really try to streamline and update these based on MSBA recommendations and incorporating sort of our park hill custom practices. So that the main one there is J E C A. The, the one item I wanted to highlight that does connect to the board there is that the, the residency policy does include a process for families and students that want to seek a waiver of residency requirements. Kind of what we call our affidavit processes. And that, that will remain the same in practice, but we do have sort of a custom process there for appeals, which Dr. Colvin in his position makes the initial determination. That can be appealed to the superintendent, but beyond that, it can also be appealed to the board. So it's, it's fairly rare that it gets there, but I wanted to bring that to your attention, that that is the one type of appeal that could come to you as a family or student seeking a waiver of residency requirements for either hardship or good cause. So that was the main, I know I wanted to highlight, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about any of these.
Or do you have any questions?
I noticed that many of these were rescinding policies, were rescinding the policy. Is that because they are covered in a, in another area? Or is it a recommendation from MSBA? Or what's the reason for them?
Yeah, you're right. Most of them are G policies that are now, the items are covered in other policies is the, is the norm. There'd be an example of, maybe one exception would be, we had our own policy on our employee assistance program that we've got that covered other places, including in our website and benefits information. It is referenced in policies, but that was one that MSBA no longer has the standalone policy. But for the most part, it's because they're existing elsewhere.
I just want to highlight that the A plus, there was an announcement today about the A plus for our seniors. And that's, everyone should look into that, that, that's a senior that's concerned about it.
Yeah, A plus will be looked at actually from Desi on lots of fronts, not just for our current seniors, but for the students that are not taking EOCs. EOC passage is a, passing your EOCs is a requirement of the A plus program. And so the Desi is looking at that, also what Mr. Monses is referring to around seniors and hours, those type of things that are happening and how they're going to handle that. So we will communicate that out on our website through our A plus coordinators and through Nicole's office to get that clarified, to make sure everybody's aware of that. But thank you, Mr. Monses, for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
Clay, did these, did these make it through the normal process with the policy committee and everything?
Yeah, just in the nick of time.
Okay. Will it be a while then before we get another set of policies to approve?
Yeah, you'll have these as a second read next meeting. But yes, we've canceled the April meeting, so there'll be a lull there. And hopefully we'll be able to get May in, but we'll just have to see how it goes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to board member reports and requests. Board members, do you have any, any discussion items you'd like to bring up? Ms. Newberger?
Well, nothing other than just information for you that today, the county I'm in in Florida, Pinellas County, went under what they're calling a safer at home order. And so until that's lifted, I can't leave the county. So unless it's for a medical reason, so.
Well, take care of yourself. Thank you, Ms. Newberger. Ms. Yamada?
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Boland?
None, thank you.
Ms. Reed?
None, thank you.
Mr. Monses?
I just want to point out that, you know, a lot of our restaurants and other places, they're closed for in, in restaurant dining, but they're still available for takeout. And if you do that, try to tip as much as, as you think is, that you can because they're really struggling right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monses. Mr. Fain?
Yeah, I wanted to, well, first of all, I was grateful to hear that Dr. Coward had been partnering with our health department to make sure that our inventory of supplies could be freed up if needed, if and as needed. So I've been working with Dagmar Wood, County Commissioner, and in, in conjunction with our health department and area hospitals to get the word out about what the supplies that are in demand are needed. And just, I really appreciate Bart, you connecting me with your employer, Rockhurst. Kimberly, thank you for connecting me through your husband with Park University. We just continue to get the word out. I, I think it's going to be important in the future as supplies get diverted to hotspots. You know, we want to make sure that we also make sure that our, our first responders and that our health workers are safe. So again, really appreciate the fact that Park Hill has taken the lead on that and, and we've, we're been, we've been communicating with the right people. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Well, it's time for adjournment. I'd like to thank Dr. Coward and Ms. Hibbs, especially for all the hard work to make this video conference work. First time we've ever done this really, and it really worked well from what I can tell. With that, we, we have no closed session this evening. And the meeting is adjourned at 7:45 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
I was waiting until 30 seconds.